I'm just gonna wait for Augie to get back in room before we start.
Okay, it's all live, so whenever you guys want to start.
Will you read? Good evening, welcome to the Board of Trustees' annual organization meeting for December 7th, 2020. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Any motion?
I move.
Second.
Full favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. For those who are watching at home, this is the annual organization meeting of the Village of America. I believe, to my knowledge, is the first that has ever been held on Zoom. The help of God, it would be the last ever to be held on Zoom. It's normally a night of celebration. It's really when we do the lineup for the next year. So, that being said, I will get right to festivities. The first is the swearing in of trustees. Pardon me. And the first trustee to be sworn in is Kelly Winstrup, the deputy mayor, and I believe Augie is gonna do that. Augustino.
Thanks, Augie.
My pleasure. Raise your right hand, I say your name.
I, Kelly Winstrup.
Do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the regulations of the Village of Mamaroneck.
And the regulations of the Village of Mamaroneck.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of trustee.
Discharge the duties of trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Kelly.
Thanks, Tom.
Would you like to say a couple of words?
Um, I would, if we have a moment.
Sure.
Um, thanks, Augie, for swearing me in tonight for the second time. I know we did this last week. And I want to thank the Mamaroneck residents for giving me the opportunity to serve for two more years. You know, when Mayor Murphy appointed me to fill a vacancy on the Board of Trustees, the village was humming along with a new village manager and a comfortable budget. Now we're all facing the personal hardships of the COVID-19 pandemic. We're in this together. More than ever, caring for each other across the village is a matter of survival. Our businesses are suffering. Please, this year more than others, shop locally and support our restaurants with takeout. We have free parking on the Mamaroneck Avenue through the holidays and we'll have free 15-minute parking after the holidays to encourage curbside delivery and carryout. Our restaurants are depending on us to survive. I want to use the limited time I have here tonight to urge Mamaroneck residents to continue checking in on their neighbors. And for residents who've not faced the economic hardships that some of our neighbors are enduring, please be generous in giving to local organizations. The Community Resource Center is a bedrock of assistance for our immigrant community. The STEM Alliance of Larchmont-Mamaroneck is helping students meet the challenges of online learning by providing broadband access, equipment, and tutoring. And the Larchmont-Mamaroneck Hunger Task Force is feeding hundreds of families each week. Our community has many worthwhile nonprofits. Please continue to support your favorites. I mentioned these three because they are specifically and immediately helping the Mamaroneck residents with the COVID fallout. Nothing is more important than helping our neighbors at this time. Please give what you can in money or time to our worthy community organizations. And of course, help each other by social distancing, wearing a mask, and washing your hands. I'm wishing you all my best for a safe and healthy holiday season and a much better new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Sure.
The next up is trustee Natchez being sworn in by Judge Darico.
Good evening. Are you ready, trustee Natchez?
I am indeed, and thank you very much for doing this.
Okay. Please raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I, Daniel Natchez.
Dan Natchez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The laws, rules, and regulations of the Village of Mamaroneck.
The laws, rules, and regulations of the Village of Mamaroneck.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of trustee.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of trustee.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Okay, congratulations to you and your co-trustee Kelly and to my co-judge Dan Gallagher, who will be sworn in by our county exec.
Thank you, Judge Darico.
Thank you, and thank you very much again, Judge Darico, for doing this. I just want to thank everybody in the Village of Mamaroneck for their trust in me. I will continue to serve and try and move this forward, move this village forward on a village-wide basis. We are in the middle of a pandemic, which doesn't come as a surprise to anybody. But the problem right now is things are getting worse. We have to even try harder than we have in the past for social distancing, wearing a mask, and not taking chances. Not only for the protection of yourself and your loved ones, but for everybody else you come in contact with. This is exceedingly important. We are at a crossroads. We can make it together. We can work together and fight together to get through this and get back to a new normal, normal. Which will be probably different than the normals of today and the normal of yesterday. And I look forward to helping everybody in the village moving forward, improving our quality of life, and maintaining a village approach for our future in our development and our recreational enjoyment. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Natchez, and congratulations. The next up at bat is trustee Tefor, and trustee Tefor will be sworn in by county executive George Latimer, a special guest today. Thank you, county executive Latimer, for showing up for us once again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The completion of this month will be the end of my 29th year representing this village in one capacity or another. And it's a great honor that Victor and Dan have asked me to come to do this service. Victor, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Victor Tefur.
I, Victor Tefur.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the regulations of the Village of Mamaroneck.
And the regulations of the Village of Mamaroneck.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of village trustee.
The duties of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Victor.
Thank you very much, county executive. And thank you for coming. I know you're probably not the perfect analogy, but your RBI on swearing ceremonies is gonna increase slightly today. And, but I appreciate your leadership, particularly at this difficult time. The presence of the county is palpable, is reliable. So we're very thankful to have you and all your staff supporting us through this time, and we need some more of that. So thank you for being with us. And there's little I can add to what my esteemed colleagues have said very nicely, what, you know, how can we best deal with the circumstances in front of us? Probably the only thing I can add is by way of recognition, not just from me, but from everybody, our first responders. And that's why I asked a couple of our chiefs, I think they may be present, they're probably around there, or if not listening, to be with us today. Because I think now more than ever, for example, having a fire department, and I missed the most important word, a volunteer fire department is just something that is, now we can understand the value and the meaning of that. Not only their connection with the village, their sacrifice, how much they give, but, you know, how that serves the village and how that is, will help us tremendously in this very stressful time. So I think now, more than every regular year, I wanted the chiefs, all first responders, to get that acknowledgement from us that we appreciate what they do, their families, their support, and we're counting on them to help us through this. And also, of course, our manager, our staff, and all the volunteers of the village. Coming from Latin America, and this is my final words, I think in Latin America, we lost a little bit of that volunteering and that really undermines democracy. So keeping all this volunteer work is just vital to our village character, our village ownership, and I count on all you to move on. So thank you very much, county executive and all of you.
Thank you, Victor, and congratulations. Congratulations to all the trustees. I look forward to working with you all in the immediate future, meaning tonight, including. And tonight, we are also swearing in Judge Gallagher, or Justice Gallagher. I believe Justice Gallagher, this is your fourth time winning election in the Village of America. Congratulations to you, sir.
Thank you, Tom.
Also be sworn in by the county executive.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. We hold the judiciary in a special place as legislators and executives because you are part of us, but you're separate from us in order to give proper justice to all. And we're very honored to be able to swear you into another term, Judge. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Daniel Gallagher, do solemnly swear.
I, Daniel Gallagher, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the regulations of the Village of Mamaroneck.
And the regulations of the Village of Mamaroneck.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of village justice.
The duties of village justice.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, your honor. A pleasure.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. County Executive George. I appreciate, greatly appreciate, your coming out. I have no doubt that you have one of the busiest schedules of any public service servant in Westchester County, if not in the entire state. So, much appreciated. It's a great honor for me to have you administer my oath tonight. Just briefly, I'd like to express my gratitude to the Mamaroneck community for my reelection. I don't take it for granted, it's a great privilege to serve as village justice over these many years. And I look forward to continuing Judge Darico and my efforts to improve the quality of each visitor's experience in our court. I believe that the Village of Mamaroneck Court, which has been serving the village for more than 100 years, is an important institution and truly a pillar of our community. We have all faced serious challenges during the course of this year, this difficult year of COVID. I'm proud to say that with the support of our dedicated staff, the court has responded, actively responded to the COVID challenge by effectively implementing necessary safety protocols while also continuing to ably fulfill our daily mission. Many people don't realize this, but while the court offices have been closed to the public for much of the past several months, we continue to have our staff in there every day and we operate, probably we are busier now than we were pre-COVID in terms of doing what we do to serve the community. We may not be having as many people in the courtroom as used to, but we are substituting, you know, technology and Zoom meetings and the like to have hearings, to have arraignments, to have conferences on civil matters and landlord tenant matters. So we're very busy and Judge Darico and I are dedicated to continuing our important work with the court. So finally, during this very different winter for all of us, I'd like to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season and a happy new year. And thank you all, thank you, George. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you, and congratulations, Judge Darico. This would normally be the time where we break out and go to like cheese and wine and little snacks, but seeing that we're all socially distant, we'll get right to our work. I just want to say congratulations to you all, you know, anybody that has the guts to put their name on a ballot in any office in America, it's a tough job and it's a tough thing to do. And I thank you all for putting it out there and congratulations on being elected.
Thank you. May I, one minute, I just, I think the chiefs are gonna be all now excused and I hadn't seen Chief DeRusa come present. I thank her because I wanted them all to be present. I know their busy schedules, but I just want to acknowledge her presence and also to wish her best success. We're counting on her leadership in this transition and through this difficult time. So I just wanted to acknowledge her and of course, allow them all to now, you know, fly free for a bit.
And I do want to point out that Chief DeRusa will be formally sworn in as chief of the Village of Mamaroneck Police Department on December 14th. She is chief now, but you know, we'll have a little ceremony for Chief DeRusa on December 14th. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief Barney, who's attending tonight also. And I'll simply point it out, the police and fire department for all they do.
Thank you very much.
Take care, Cindy. Okay. Item number three. Appointment of the deputy mayor, and it's a mayoral appointment. And I am going to reappoint Deputy Mayor Kelly Winstrup. Kelly, thank you for accepting this assignment. I have been a deputy mayor too. It's another title with a little more work and no more pay. So, thank you for stepping forward and for doing that.
Thank you for the continued confidence, Tom.
No doubt. Appointment of clerk treasurer is the mayor's appointment. And I am happy to once again appoint Augustino Fusco to the position of clerk treasurer in the Village of Mamaroneck. I remember when Mr. Fusco first got the job, and he has done an exemplary job in the past, what are we talking, 14 years?
16.
16 years. He has grown from being not just a good clerk treasurer, but he has grown into being a good leader. And I appreciate his hard work and I appreciate everything he's done for this community, especially in times of stress and when we needed a leader, he stepped up. So, Augustino, good luck in the next two years.
Thank you.
The next is the mayor's appointment to the sexual harassment committee. Pursuant to the village's sexual harassment policy, the mayor shall appoint one member of the village ward and three department heads and their supervisors, one of which shall be from the police department and one of which from the public works department. Okay, and so the appointments are, we're keeping Sandy DeRusa on, but instead of being a lieutenant, now she's chief DeRusa. Mr. Robert Welch, who is supervisor in DPW. Mr. Jason Pinto, who is a supervisor, he's the head of the rec department. Mr. Pinto has really done an excellent job at the record, and I know he will take this position seriously. And I would like to thank trustee Lucas for once again stepping forward and being on this committee. So, thank you all. Okay, item number six.
Okay, so I move that we appoint John Cherico as village prosecutor, to reappoint John Cherico as village prosecutor. Do I need to read the whole thing, or shall I just?
That's the last sentence.
So, resolve that John Cherico be and he hereby is reappointed village prosecutor to the Village of Mamaroneck to serve at the pleasure of the appointing authority and a compensation to be fixed by the Board of Trustees.
One second.
Augustino Cole roll. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Appointment of village attorney. And I'm making this motion, resolve that Rob Esposito be and hereby is reappointed village attorney as the chair of the appointing authority and a compensation to be fixed by the Board of Trustees. The board intends to enter into a review process for this position. And Mr. Esposito, thank you for all your hard work in the past year.
A second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer an amendment.
That's out of order, this is a script.
It's not out of order, it's a motion on the floor.
No, it's an out of order, and I'm not gonna accept it, it's an out of order amendment.
It is not an out of order amendment.
Out of order amendment.
On the, you have a motion. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's not correct.
And it's also been seconded.
Anytime there's a motion, anybody can make a motion.
Augustino Cole roll, it's been made and seconded. Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Winstrup?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes, and I'm gonna say that the mayor is totally out of order and incorrect.
Trustee Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Appointment of bond counsel?
Dan?
Trustee Natchez, this is you.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Mamaroneck hereby authorize that the clerk treasurer to retain the services of the following firm on behalf of the Village of Mamaroneck, the law offices of Jeffrey E. Storch and the Village Bond Council to handle all bond matters and the bond anticipation notes.
I second that motion.
Augustino. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas? Excuse me. Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Item number nine, opposition fidelity bonds for employees.
I'll make that motion, which is to resolve that the crime and fidelity bonds, as examined by the Board of Trustees, be executed to the village and filed with the village clerk for the following officers and employees. Clerk treasurer, 110K, deputy treasurer, 60K, deputy clerk, 35K, mayor, 35K, court clerks, 20K each, justices, village justices, 10K each, village marshal, 10K each, parking meter, collection staff, other employees, including volunteers while employed by the village, 10K.
I'll second.
Augustino. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Designation of depositories.
Resolve that JP Morgan, Chase Bank, and Sterling National Bank be and they hereby are designated as depositories for the village funds for the ensuing official year.
Second.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Murphy?
Aye.
Designation of signatures.
I'll make this motion, that's to resolve that the clerk treasurer shall inform the depositories for village funds that are the following combinations, that the following combination of signatures on any village of Mamaroneck checks are authorized. Drawn on general fund, capital fund, police pension fund, trust and agency endowment and gift funds, water fund and clerk treasurer accounts payable account for Tom Murphy and deputy mayor Kelly Winstrup and Agostino Fusco, clerk treasurer, or Sally Roberts, deputy clerk, or Laura Vasami, deputy treasurer, and drawn on payroll accounts, petty cash trust account, trust and agency insurance deduction, trust and agency group disability, trust and agency fund state retirement system, trust and agency guarantee and bill deposit, money market accounts, only that of Agostino Fusco, clerk treasurer, or Sally Roberts, deputy clerk, or Laura Vasami, deputy treasurer.
I second that.
Augustino. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Designation of official newspaper, resolve that the general news is hereby designated as the official newspaper of the Village of Mamaroneck for the ensuing official year. Trustees, four?
I'll second that, yes.
Augie. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Designation of meeting and work session nights of Board of Trustees.
Resolve that the general and second and fourth Mondays of each and every month be designated as a work session, regular meeting nights of the Board of Trustees, such meetings to commence at 5:00 PM, 7:30 PM respectively, in the courtroom at 169 Mount Pleasant Avenue, unless we're under Zoom, or in which case it will be by Zoom. And be it further resolved that the following tentative dates are hereby adopted and they're listed on the script.
I will second.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Written investment policy. War?
Okay, whereas the Board of Trustees adopted a written investment policy in May of 1993 in accordance with sections 39 of general municipal law, and whereas section 39 requires that the investment policy be reviewed at least annually, and whereas the clerk treasurer has updated the written investment policy for our review, now therefore be it resolved that the following investment policy is hereby adopted by the Board of Trustees for the Village of Mamaroneck. Now, do we want, we don't need, do we want to?
Second without reading.
Okay. Thank you.
This investment policy goes on for four or five pages, so we're not gonna read it all, but it's online. And the trustees have read it. Augustino, call the roll. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
And I'd like to say I practiced reading it in case I had to read it out loud. So I really read it three times today.
Congratulations.
Yes.
This is the same policy, nothing has changed, correct, Augie?
Nothing has changed.
No, it's just, okay, that's, okay.
Okay. Procurement and credit card policy. Whereas the Board of Trustees adopted procurement policy in January of 1992, which was updated and readapted in 2016, and again in May of 2018, along with the credit card policy in accordance with section 101 of general municipal law. And whereas section 103 requires that the procurement policy be reviewed at least annually, and whereas the clerk treasurer has provided the current procurement policy for our review, now therefore be resolved that the following procurement policy is hereby adopted by the Board of Trustees. And the policy is one, two, three, four, six, seven pages. So I'm gonna make that motion.
And I'll second.
Augustino. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winstrup?
Yes.
Maggie? Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
The next is Board of Appeals.
There is none.
That's right, we're not making an appointment at this time. And there'll be a holdover. The next one is chair.
Chair, yeah. So, resolve that Robin Kramer be and she hereby is reappointed chair of the Board of Appeals for a term of one year, such term to expire December 2021.
Second.
Augie. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes. Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Aye. Board of Architecture Review.
Resolve that William Binzer be and hereby reappointed member of the Board of Architecture Review for a term of three years, such term to expire December two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
What we see now.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Uh. Okay, Chair. Resolve that William Binzer be and he hereby is reappointed chair of the Board of Architecture Review for a term of one year, such term to expire in December twenty twenty-one.
Second.
What we see now.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Board of Ethics.
Resolve that Shari Allison, who is a registered non-affiliated voter, be and she hereby is appointed member of the Board of Ethics for a term of three years, such term to expire December twenty twenty-three.
Second.
What we see now.Trustees Lucas?
Yes, 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 sorry.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Also, the Board of Ethics, resolve that Susan Berenswig, who is a registered Democrat, just so you know, the Board of Ethics has to have two Democrats, two Republicans, and one independent. That's by village law. Resolve Susan Berenswig, Democrat, be and she hereby is appointed a member of the Ethics Board for a term of three years, that term to expire December twenty twenty-three.
Second.
What we see now.Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Fire Department Member to the Traffic Commission. Department is asking that Chief Andrew, not asking, they have appointed Chief Andrew, ex-chief Andrew LaRaca to represent the Fire Department's liaison to the Traffic Commission. We thank Chief LaRaca for doing this. He is very knowledgeable about the village, the history of the village, and especially where and how trucks need, especially fire trucks, need to navigate in this community. So thank you, Mr. LaRaca, ex-chief LaRaca. And the next is Board of Traffic Commissions. It's for your appointment.
Resolve that Sharon Purdy be and she hereby is reappointed a member of the Board of Traffic Commissions for a term of three years, such term to expire December two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
What we see now.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
I'd like to move that Robert Stark be appointed member of the Board of Traffic Commissioners for a term of three years, such term to expire December twenty twenty-three. Dan?
Trustee Natchez, you want to second it?
Yes, second.
What we see now.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes, with thanks.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
And I'd like to resolve that and Andres Garcia be and is hereby appointed a member of the Board of Traffic Commissioners to fill an unexpired term of two years, such term to expire December twenty twenty-two. Thank you, Andres.
I'll second that.
What we see now.Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. And we still have an open position on the Traffic Commission if someone would like to serve, please contact Sally Roberts at sroberts@b o m n y dot org. Okay, now we need to point the chair of the Traffic Commission. Kelly?
Oh, I'm sorry. I move with Shannon Purdy be reappointed chair of the Board of Traffic Commissioners for a term of one year, such term to expire December twenty twenty-one.
Second.
What we see now.Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Budget Committee.
Resolve that William Spiro be and here, and he is hereby reappointed a member of the Budget Committee for a term of three years, such term to expire December twenty twenty-three.
Second.
What we see now.Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Resolve that Glenn Tippett be and he hereby is appointed a member to Budget Committee for a term of three years, such term to expire on December twenty twenty-three, and thank you, Mr. Tippett, for stepping up.
I will second that.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
First Glenn Willoughby.
Committee for the Environment.
Resolve that David Freeman be and he hereby is reappointed a member of the Committee of the Environment for the Environment for a term of three years, such term to expire December two thousand twenty-three.
Or?
Oh, yes, second, sorry.
Okay.
Oi. Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Uh. I'll, I'll make this next one. I'm gonna move to appoint on the Committee for the Environment Liam Rob Hagan for a term of three years, such term to expire December twenty twenty-three.
And I will second that motion.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
I move that Debbie Sullivan be appointed as a member of the Committee for the Environment for a term of three years, such term to expire December twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Oi.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
To Tom vote? I didn't hear Tom.
Yeah, I did.
Okay, thank. I move that Mandy for Lanza Sticos be and is hereby appointed a member of the Committee for the Environment for a term of three years, such term to expire December twenty twenty-three.
Victor?
Second.
Second. All right, I'll second it. Call roll.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Resolve that Ellen Styler, so I'm sorry, Ellen Silver be and she hereby is reappointed chair of the Committee for the Environment for a term of one year, such term to expire December two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Arts Council.
I'll make the first one. This for three years, seven members. I'll make a motion to appoint Elizabeth O'Rourke, reappointed actually, for three more years expiring December twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that motion. What we see now.Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Next.
I move that Maria Kiriakow be reappointed member of the Council of the Arts for a term of three years, such term to expire December twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Oi. Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
I move that Violet, you say the lender be appointed, be reappointed a member of the Arts Council for a term of three years, such term to expire December twenty twenty-three.
I'll second. I second.
Say it, all right, just speak up, yeah. Wait for a second. Call it, Oi.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Resolve that Carrie Bakaro Melkin be and she hereby is reappointed member of the Council of the Arts for a term of three years, such term expiring December two thousand twenty-three. Kelly?
Oh, second, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Uh, there's an open spot still on the Arts Council, so if anybody would like to serve on a committee, it's actually a very fun committee and council, please contact Sally Roberts once again at s r o b e r t s at b o m n y dot org. Flood mitigation advisory committee.
Um, I resolve that David Finch be and he is hereby appointed a member of the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee for a term of three years, such term to expire December twenty twenty-three.
One second.
Second.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Uh, let's say aye, and I'd also like to thank Mr. Finch. Mr. Finch is a former trustee in the Village of Amerenik, and it's nice when you see people stay involved. We have another opening on a committee. Once we have this contact Ms. Roberts. And now it's appointing the chair.
Resolve that Peggy Jackson be and she hereby is reappointed chair of the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee for a term of one year, such term to expire December two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Oi.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Yeah, the next is the Harbor and Coastal Zone Management Commission.
I'll take the first nomination for Lisa Axiza to be appointed a member of this commission for three years to expire December twenty twenty-three.
I will second it. Oi.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. And we also have another opening on a committee. Okay, and they appoint their own chair. Planning Board.
I move that Ellen Styler be and she is hereby appointed a member of the Planning Board for a term of five years, such term to expire December twenty twenty-five.
I'll, I'll second that.
Oh, who says it?
I'm seconding that.
Okay. Uh. What we see?
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. And then I'm making a motion, resolve that Kathleen Sable be and is hereby reappointed chair of the planning board for a term of one year, such term to expire December twenty twenty-one. Ms. Sable is a former trustee and a former mayor of the Village of Amerenik, and we thank her for staying involved and for her expert participation.
I'll probably second that motion.
What we see now.Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Recreation Parks.
Resolve that Tina Marra Test, Test and she hereby is reappointed a member of the Recreation and Parks Commission for a term of three years, such term to expire December twenty twenty-three.
Second.
What we see now.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
And I'll move to reappoint Kristen Better to this commission for three years expiring December twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that motion. What we see now.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
I move that Brittany Ross be appointed member of the Recreation and Parks Commission for a term of three years expiring December twenty twenty-three. I second that.
What we see now.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Murphy?
Aye. We have two openings on the Recreation Parks. Once again, if you'd like to have an interest in serving s r o b e r t s at b o m n y dot org. S. Roberts at v o m y dot. Uh, the next is the Tree Committee.
I move that Beverly Sheridan be reappointed member of the Tree Committee for a term of three years expiring December twenty twenty-three.
Second.
What we see now.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFour?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
I move that Marlene Starr be and she is hereby reappointed a member of the Tree Committee to, for a term of three years to expire December twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
What we see now.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchup?[1623.21]
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Resolve that Ellen Axelrod be and she is hereby appointed a member of the Tree Committee to fill an open position for a term of two years, such term to expire December 2022.
I'll second.
Augustino. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Wenstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
I move that Beverly Sheridan and Gal Kohler be and are hereby reappointed co-chairs of the Tree Committee for a term of one year, such term to expire December 2021.
Second.
Augustino. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Wenstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Marine Education Center Advisory Committee.
We have to make that motion to reappoint Peter Linderoff for this Marine Education Center Advisory Committee for three years expiring December 2023.
I'll second. Augustino.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Wenstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
I move that Anne Sklar be reappointed member of the Marine Education Advisory Committee for a term of three years expiring December 2023.
Second.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Wenstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Resolve that Carolyn Jarman be and she hereby is appointed a member of the Marine Education Center Advisory Committee to fill an unexpired term of two years, such term expiring December 2022.
Second.
Augustino. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Wenstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.